593 local classrooms. Combined people population, boys and girls. Population of 1,142 teachers. That gives you a ratio of 38 people to a teacher. In my own local government, Orado. I have from all two ways do not know. I repeat, there is dispute on this. Local government should get myself a bit of origin ready. All right, my local government, 84 schools. I will be more detailed here. Number of classrooms, 1,080. Boys, 22,953 boys. And for girls, we have 22,655 girls. Total, boys and girls in Orado primary schools. 45,680 people. And they have male teachers, 96. Female teachers, 1,000. Total number of teachers, 1,096. That gives you a ratio of 52 people to one teacher in my local government. All right, my local government, this is where. This is where our comrades come from. You know the comrades? All right, I will make sure it's the clear of me. We have 97 schools, 800 classrooms. 11,013 boys. Exactly half of the number of boys in my own local government of Orado. And they have 10,000, several at 26 girls. With a total people population of 21,739 people. With 1,433 male teachers and 696 female teachers. That gives you a combined teaching population of 1,039 people. That gives you a ratio of 21 people to one teacher. Obiadno East. Some people from my area who can't pronounce very well used to call it Obiadno East. But Obiadno the East, 2 people to one teacher. Obiadno Southwest, 86 schools. Total number of people, 22,485 people. Total number of teachers, 766. And you have a ratio of 29 people to one teacher. In our East local government, we have 48 schools. 466 classrooms. Student population, boys and girls, 70,745 people. We have a combined teaching crew of 568 teachers. And a ratio of 31 people to one teacher. In our West, 44 schools, 390 classrooms. Combined people population, 30,000, 523 people. Total number of teachers, 523 teachers. That gives you a ratio of 26 people to one teacher. In more than local government. Notable Belo or Sankis not here. He would like to hear this. No, we have Belo or something. 86 schools. 766 classrooms. 90,000, 716 people. Male teachers, 259. Females, 683 female teachers. Total number of teachers, 942 teachers. That gives you a ratio of 21 people to one teacher. Cross. The total number of schools, primary schools in Endos State. Government owned, 1,064. Total number of classrooms, 10,213 classrooms. Total number of boys in primary schools. 203,448 boys. And girls, we have 196,606 girls. Total people in our primary schools across the local government areas of Endos State. We have total number of female teachers. Sorry, male teachers in our primary school, 3,244. And female teachers, 10,219. That gives you a total of 13,600. Sorry, 30,463 teachers. That gives you a ratio of 30 people to a teacher, on average. Members of the AUT and the secondary school teachers. They will agree that this figure is much, much lower than even the figure recommended by the district. In terms of student people or people teacher ratio. And I just say that if we get our postings right. If we eliminate abuses by practices and corruption in Subed and in the Ministry of Education. Our teachers are posted strictly according to population. In every classroom, we would have, we will not have more than 30 people to one teacher. And therefore, the question of having classrooms without teacher is a result of abuses by Subed. And some people in the Ministry of Basic Education. And I do believe that we will find solution to it on the basis of this data. However, given our level of development. It is arguable whether at giving up a capital income. Whether we can afford to maintain 30 people to one teacher. If yes, this is fine. But if we were to suggest that we use 35 people to a teacher. Or even 40 people to a teacher, you will find that. If we use 30 people to a teacher. You will also find the following figures quite interesting. Per classroom, 40 people per classroom. In Agokorado local government, we require only 685 teachers. That will give you a surplus of 216 teachers. In a local government, you will require 772 teachers. And you have a surplus of 109 teachers. In Esa, 363 teachers. And that will leave you with a next list of 272 teachers. In Esa North East. Esa North East. You will have. 272 teachers. And you have a surplus of 239 teachers. In Esa North East. You will require. 408 teachers and a surplus of 194 teachers. 30 teachers and that will give you a surplus of 160 teachers. In Esa West, you will have. 363 teachers and a surplus of 174 teachers. In Esa Central. You will have 268 teachers and a surplus of 100 teachers. In Esa West. Sorry, in Esa East. You will have 616 teachers and a surplus of 105. In Esa West, you will require 251 teachers. And that will give you a surplus of 105. Sorry, a surplus, no, I say that again. In Esa West, you will have 751 teachers. And a surplus of 30 teachers. In Igwege local government, you will need 219 teachers. And a surplus of 235. In Igobaoka local government, you will require 1,000 as a separate teachers. And you have a surplus of 65 teachers. In Orado local government, you will have 1,400 teachers. And a deficit, you need to employ additional 44 teachers to make up for 40 people to a teacher. In Orado local government, you will have 5. You will require only 543 teachers. And that will give you a surplus of 496 teachers. In Obiadno North East, you will require 655 teachers. And a surplus of 504 teachers. In Obiadno Southwest, we will need 562 teachers. And that will give you a surplus of 204 teachers. In our West, you will require 444 teachers. Who will lead to a surplus of 124 teachers. In our, no, that was our East. In our West, you require 38 teachers. And that will lead to a surplus of 185 teachers. In more than local government, you will require 493 teachers. Leading to a surplus of 494 teachers. Cross. If we adopt a principle of 40 people to one teacher. Endos State, we need, we will require 986 teachers. And that will leave us with a surplus of 3,477 idle teachers. So I thought I should give you this picture so you have an idea of what is going on. And then wanted to have the facts. Because the problem of our country is that we do not have data. And because we don't have data, we do guess more. We cover with wrong prescriptions and we never find solution to our problem. So we thought that the starting point is to have the facts. Having established the fact, the issue is how do you what do you do on the basis of these facts? So that the solutions we prescribe will be driven by the evidence of ground. And this is not about sentiment, this is about facts. And of course, you have opportunity to challenge these figures if you do not believe them. But I think what is very interesting. Hello? Please, 2 minutes and I will be done. Is that in my opening remarks, I did say that in Endos State. Our people are clear that the child is entitled as a right to go to school. And our parents are ever willing to send their children to school, including the girl child. What these statistics have shown is that in some cases, we have more female people in schools than men. That for me is very, very encouraging. Because in some other states, we have seen, you see how to lecture parents to allow the girl child to go to school. So in Endos, this is not a problem. In our primary schools, the male teachers are 3,244 teachers. And the females, the women are 10,219. Which means we have more women willing and able to teach than men. I also think that this is important in terms of planning and in terms of, you know. Deal with gender issues in our primary school system. So this is one leg of the information. And as they say, it is food for thought. But I hope in the end, it will be thought, we provide food. But let me also share with you some other information which you will find. How we say, a little worrisome. Somebody must give me some before anything, so there. Basic Education Council. My comrades. I think it's also important to note that. As a result of some of the steps we have taken. To restore confidence and integrity to our public schools. The response by our people has been very encouraging. For example, between 2009 and 2011. The total number of people in public primary schools. Increased from 23,000 to 33,000 in 2011. In junior secondary schools, the number increased from 8,000 to 11,000. And the senior secondary school, it decreased from 6,000 in 2009 to 8,000 by 2011. If you update, if you update the figure to 2012, the figure will increase even much more significantly. However. Although the happiness of improvement in. The number of people that are able to pass their examination, the rate is not entirely satisfactory. And so we do need to revisit the issue of teaching. Teacher's attitude, parents' attitude, and all of those things that we ought to do. Such that our people, those parts of the school, the school pass through the people. I believe that given the picture that we currently have across the country. People are lamenting the rate of failure in our YEC examination and NECO examination. The truth is, you can't give what you do not have. It points to serious crisis in our primary and secondary school system. And for me, our task is not to continue lamenting it. I believe it is within our power as a people and as a government to find sustainable solution to it. Now, such as I try to understand, the following figure will also interest you. You will recall that there was a time we had issues with some. I believe in particular AUT and some members of the public who do understand why. When we asked teachers to produce their credentials, including their primary school people certificate. Of course, this coincided with the period when I myself, I was being accused of not attending a primary school. And I read some articles which suggested that. The comrade was asking teachers to produce their primary schools because he himself is in trouble with his own primary school. That is fine, that is the beauty of democracy. For the truth, we will try to understand first whether or not we have qualified teachers. And if we do, what is their age bracket? Because only yesterday, we read in the newspaper that the state chief judge. Was compared to retire composedly. But this is not a problem peculiar to any particular person or groups, it's a national problem. Because people prefer to die on the job than to retire. There are different explanations why people do that. But we try to first get the facts to enable us to deal with the issue. Because teaching is a job that requires people to stand. And if you're. I said it quite in there, you might not be able to stand for 6 hours. And if you can't stand, we only teachers know why you can teach. But teachers always tell me that they like to stand up to talk because they are used to standing. Now, this information will also interest you. We find that. We find that, for example. Many of my comrades. Completed their primary schools. Some at the age of 7. Some at the age of 8. Some at the age of 9, don't give me information overload. Otherwise, you make me angry, take it easy. When I call you, don't go far away. Now, we have. 89 teachers. Out of 1,0379. Obtained their primary school people certificate before they attained the age of 9. Some before the age of 8. Which means they started their primary one at the age of 2. So they were able to finish before they become 9 years old. In fact, some of the records show that there were few who were particularly gifted. Hello? So gifted that they finished primary school job before they were born. That is what the record shows. That unknown many of us, some of our primary mothers have to run into their system. Trying to establish. Hello? As they say, facts are sacred, opinion is free. This is not my opinion, this is what the record is showing. We find that. Of all our primary school teachers. Only 1,287, representing 9%. Out of 40,454 primary school teachers in Endos State have proper and accurate records in our system. 91% of our primary school teachers have various forms of discrepancies in their records. This may not necessarily mean that they are not qualified. It just means that there are problems with proper documentation and proper record keeping at the time of a planning. It is also interesting to note that. About 1,079 teachers, representing 11.5%. Claim that they obtained their primary school people certificate after they have been employed as teachers. In fact, some obtained primary school people certificate. From the school in which they have been teaching over the past 10 to 50 years. And they obtained those certificates no more than 2 years ago. Now, the issue is whether they were going to either. What do you call this? It's the first I know, TU. Teacher training colleges. Whether they were going to teacher training colleges. Before going to primary school or better still, attended and obtained NCE before attending primary school. Now, these are some of the. These are some of the facts that have been masked in the cause of trying to do proper documentation. And that was why we were worried when Ministry of Education suddenly got fired. Jim Osbach at the peak of our. You know, this, this research and tried to do proper, proper documentation. So my. My lords, honorable members. Both of the FEDRA and Endos State House of Assembly. Our wayfarers, community leaders, market women. Youth organizations, comrades, teachers, etc. These are facts that have been well documented. You will agree with me that. It will not be helpful to the cost of education. And ensuring that we deliver quality education to our students in public schools. If we do not deal satisfactorily with these and other discrepancies that have been discovered. As I said, we have come with an open mind, though not an empty mind. We do have some ideas as to the way to go forward. But I do not want to influence your thinking. I don't want to trouble you with these facts. Believe me that you will be able to suggest how we deal with the issue so that at the end of the day. The Endo check, the better for it. We remain committed to devoting more resources, not only to giving more schools, but also providing sufficient equipment and all the necessary TGA's to ensure that the guy who attend public schools in the Dusse State is not disadvantaged relative to those who attend private schools. For many of us who could have gone to school, but for the fact that we have free education in the old western region, it is a matter of beauty that we restore the ladder that we used. And restoring ladder, that means we, eh, we restore integrity to our public schools. And we cannot talk of tertiary institutions if the child does not have sound, basic education. In any case, it is a matter of law in Nigeria that the child is entitled to the first nine years of free compulsory basic education. In Dusse State, we go beyond that by abolishing school fees even in our secondary, senior secondary schools. Which means that in Dusse State, beginning with January 1st last year, or from January 1st last year, we can say with pride that in all our schools, the adult child is entitled to free education for the first 12 years. Six years in primary schools, three years in junior secondary school, and three years in senior secondary school, all free of charge to the parents. And when we say free of charge, it means the people are not expected even to pay for their examination. Which is why we now set out to print question papers for our teachers to examine their PPEs at the mark. The days ago, where they masters or administrators have to ask people to put a few money to buy, eh, to show them that I have given you enough information and that you are anxious and hungry to engage in a very objective way on the way forward. We must move on from here, forward ever, backward ever. I want to thank you for listening, and I will sit down and leave this hall more informed, more determined, and the adult child must have a quality primary and secondary school to learn and practice as we say. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the floor is now open, and I will request the steward of ceremony to part the mic ground. If you wish to make a statement or ask a question, feel free to do so. And let me assure you, on the basis of the facts that I've just shared with you. So, the floor is now open, and you move closer so you save your time. I see a gentleman in a grey suit standing, the view would have been a good one. And I'd rather allow more participation.
Patrick, he calls me. Chairman, Nigerian teacher in Dusse State. I want to observe. Eh, we have had the government governor mention a lot of issues. And if, eh, the teachers are not brought here to be ridiculed because of the, eh, shy passion that the teachers have had upon last, eh, two, three weeks ago, then I want to make some of these few comments. In first and, first and foremost, the element that was dodging our red door, eh, the teachers didn't play any part in it. I would not trust those figures to be authentic. If the government want, if the government want to get the true figures from our schools as by a remit and a number of teachers, the teachers should really be invited, invited and then played if I admit. What they said, Julian, the patients that come to the council is not complete. We don't know what the, we don't know the figures. And even the amount that is paid to the teacher, in terms of salary, is not complete. So, that the teacher's salary is one that goes the entire portion of the council to me, we also fourteen each. We do know that the council, nobody is forgiving the number of staff that will have to the council. There are not so many, eh, workers in the council. And we don't know the, that's why I think why teachers bring the point of focus. Want to say that it is not the fault of the teachers. We do know that every monthly and month, teachers prepare. It is the duty of the, eh, province of government and the government ministries to limit the, eh, the morning size of the retired teachers to government. And if they are not prepared, the child should not be promoted. I also want to say that teachers don't employ themselves. Teachers are employed by government or agents of government. So even if there are over staffing or under staffing, I don't see anything why teachers should be paying or helping for it. We do know there are lots of practices that go on in employment in the state. Teachers don't take on illegal employment. But we do know that even in primary school, for effective management of our schools, who are attending, we are supposed to have a, a strategy to have a headmaster. For that to have assistance, so we're supposed to have a headmaster who will see what is taking the day rolling of the schools by way of advocacy, the teachers, marketing of the students, and tipping of all sorts of records. And if, if I believe, eh, would the records show the, or red door, the headmasters are also under to deliver teachers in the schools by, by way of working out direction, which will not also be, if I believe there are 15 teachers in a local government here who are supposed to have 15 heads of schools, which will surprise their employees, such as teachers are doing wrong in the class. If you listen back, on that the regime of the president, Politician for Pastor John, primary school administration and funding was signed out by the third government by way of, of the, of the spot, test drive deduction. In which way, this element took over the running of primary schools. And during this era, the ministries and boards were forcing teachers to make, eh, begin from the figures. To the fact, the figures, we can say, in the way of, eh, generating more revenue or funds to the state. Even in this, in this period, in this period, the teachers never, whatever they are saying, they are welcome for, they are better than others. People went forward by bodies that they are, a support for the master to school, for what you are doing, people are paying you. The teachers who are teaching that in the place are done then. And people after that, it is, it was seen the same government, the governance of the state. That why the God, that the government by God has no right to advance in the running of primary education. Even when they don't do, they are passing a teaching to them. But they can declare that it can be the state's recovery. The state are taking over, and today, look at open students. No promotion of teachers, actually, a lot of things are doing up. Hope this comes to gentlemen, and we are crying here that the, the police is going too much for us. Teachers are with the, the whipping charge, always the whipping charge. Eh, so what for one moment, say, that one moment, that in what, oh, all of our secondary schools, there are a big of teachers.
Eh, Montgomery, I will allow you more. So we give you two minutes to speak more as brutally frank as we can.
Most of our junior secondary schools and senior secondary schools will have a deck of teachers. In which, in, eh, in some junior secondary schools, as I was talking, will have a principal and a teacher. Just in the school, where all the level players and soccer players are meant to be taught. And there was a situation where the, I know, the, the government proved that most of the government teachers in primary schools will be put there to the junior, to the junior secondary schools to work there. People, these adults, adults didn't know where the, the support teachers would be coming from. And so, the government like that today, there are so many government teachers that matter even older, after a vice who is concerned. And this group are clamoring people to, for judgment by way of going above the forty, which they have been denied. And so I promise that they have to go to secondary school, and they are going to go. So, since the past one or two years. And this will continue until the next three, five years. And another level which they, they break because there was a period where there was no element to say, oh, more playing for more than five, six years. And if this, if I did, people repair. But because so many of our people this year have pulled up retirement benefits. By this year, more will go. And if our business happens, I think we will now be talking of shop dealers from teachers again. So speaking for effective management of schools, and that part of the state will event, and certain that decision I find it will be that teachers will be displayed for the, for the point of time, then our teachers, we are afraid that our teachers will fail in the face of war. For instance, Africa was not a great mistake for employment for teachers. There was another, was, why they were being employed. And even after that, it is not telling, it probably is not telling, eh, it's not telling the price of teachers, or the price of teachers that are affected by policies, eh, justification or made justification of by what the land is. Or civil servants, people working in government sector, and that should also be, they are, they should also be reviewed. And then government, the way teachers would have been paid for it. Then, after that, we can be thinking of more decisions today if I'm.
You need to understand that the job of the leader leader is not easy. And so, I'm happy that my comrades had the opportunity to exhaust all that we wanted to say. But it's in line with the tradition. And I want to commend you and appreciate the courage to speak truth to power. And let me also assure you, I have not come here to announce retirement. Because you have assumed that because of the fact that there's only one possible outcome, retire. No, that is not. My prayer every day is that if God give us power, then He also give us wisdom. On how to use the power creatively to solve problems, not to, not to inflict pain. So, don't, don't be apprehensive, Danny. The only possible outcome is that people will need their better jobs. On the other hand, it is also my responsibility as a leader not to share away from difficult decisions if in my judgment, those decisions are necessary in order to deliver quality education to the adult child. All I ask of you is that we will rub minds together on the options. Now, as for the issue of gathering data, we do not need to debate the source of data. You can question them, as for me, we have them included for, and they will be distributed. You can go and project, but we don't need you to sit with the RCT and to process data. That would not be necessary. For accurate, as you put them, because eh, these data don't really give me much comfort. I like to give data that gives me comfort to show that a door is working and working properly, particularly in the area of education. Because you speak for a, a, a primary school teacher, eh, eh, INUT, I would just comment some of your points, and then after, I will leave the floor. The first is, you wonder whether this is an attempt to ridicule eh, teacher. Let me assure you, your way to strike only last spot, I believe. For this effort, you will agree that the short will carry out verification, you will need primary school certificate, etc., have been on many months earlier. So obviously, it has nothing to do. And trust me, or at least I ask you to trust me, I will never, ever resort to anything that is designed to ridicule anybody, anyone. So, I do not rely any form of it, because I myself, I am here in the agency of our collective struggle. But in line with our tradition, we do not share away from a problem. If you have smallpox and you choose to pretend it's just a rash, and you keep rubbing a vaslei on it, you know that it's smallpox, we need to get. And it is better to look at appropriate intervention rather than pretending that the problem is not there. The problem is there. And it's all like I've always said to you, even when I was in the ALC, this was my position. When it comes to the child, the issue of lacking knowledge, we want to be unanimous. We want to be united in that, because the future of our state, the future of a state that can be classified as a minority state require that we have the best brains. And the best brains can only be produced by an educational system that works. I am a product of that. And that is why when people say, I don't go to school, so if a man, if he goes to school and he can't tell the way he does, won't be a beautiful child. Praise God. Let me assure you, it will never be my question to ridicule anyone. Never, ever. That, those are things I forbid myself for this. So, let me assure you, no ridicule at all. Number two, local government councils. If you add the chairman of the local governments as well as the local government employees union. I have also told them that we need to look in order and find out how the employment level, the establishment of local government is determined. So you are right. When you argue that it's, it's not only the teachers are there that put body on local government financing, that we should also do at local government strength. Of course, in fact, are people asking more for the major and radical questions? I'm asking aloud whether we really need to continue with the system of local governments and this commission? Where you have a commission that decide to post a level forty officer from Oregdo to Isakor West and post from Isakor West to Isakor West. And those people may not come from those local governments. And they could decide to post more people to Oregdo Local Government much more than Oregdo Local Government required. And given the environment, including the, the, the issue of corrupt practices, I am very satisfied that there are local governments who have more people posted to them than they require. I will ask myself, can we hold a local government chairman responsible for good governance if he has no control over the employment level? So, I can assure you, there are a lot of questions which we are posing and for which we need to find answers. But we require courage and business on mutual to deal with those issues. I am not here to give anything, including myself. So trust me that we are searching everywhere. I started this morning by talking about taxes. It has never happened before that the federal government exists with tax, so they are used to read their particular power. But we are saying, no, we are not that involved. And when they argue with us, we don't send them to court and ask them to interpret. If they interpret, they have a bad tongue on, if they interpret, they give us tongue on. So, we are not going to fuel a door of our dream by continuing with business as usual. I am a change driver. I am not a traditional ruler. We do not do respect to our traditional rulers. I am a manager of change. And I have the confidence to drive our changes because God knows, my only ultimate objective is to live this state much better than I made it. And we are carrying out reforms that will bear us in the long road, longer than our death. That is the issue. So I am not for quick fix. Now, you made a good point. You made a good point, my comrade chairman of INUT, about if you add a, eh, a head teacher who is not supposed to have a classroom. That is correct. But let me ask you, where you have a ratio of 19 PPEs or 21 PPEs